Good evening, everyone. We are starting tonight on November nineteenth with the Governor Stoughton trustees meeting in advance of the Board of Selectmen's meeting because we have representatives of Pulte and representatives of the Archaeological Consulting Firm here to join us tonight to talk about the archaeological study that has been done at the town farm. So, Mark, would you like to, you and the consultant, would you like to come up and sit at this table here and join us here for the presentation?
That would be great.
That would be great.
Hello.
Thank you all for coming in tonight. Mark, would you like to introduce yourself and the consultants?
Yes, so for the record, my name is Mark Mastriani, and I'm here representing Pulte Homes of New England, and we're the builder developer that's been selected to develop, build a residential, single-family subdivision at the town farm, the poor farm off of Uppity Road, Governor Stoughton Lane. And with me tonight are two representatives from AHS, which is Archaeological and Historical Services, Inc. And to my left is Meg Harper, who's the president, and also Sarah Sportman, who has helped us with our studies. So just to give a very brief background on why we're here, so again, you know, my company, Pulte Homes of New England, we're under agreement with you, the trustees of the Governor Stoughton will, to develop a twenty-three lot, a single-family cluster subdivision at the poor farm. And back several months ago, probably in April and May, when we were working with the Conservation Commission on identifying the wetland resource areas, we were at a meeting just like this, and some concerns were brought from the public that there may be some potential Native American burials located at the poor farm. So with that said, I think the trustees and my company, you know, what we decided to do together was to kind of stop and pause, and not knowing what was right, what was wrong, what was true, what was false, what we decided to do was engage a professional and an expert in that field to kind of guide us through the process and to really identify whether the information, you know, was accurate or not. So that's what brings us here tonight. So in June, we engaged AHS to do an intensive survey of the poor farm and to specifically look for native burials. And there was a couple, there was a couple specific features that we were supposed to really investigate. There were some suspicious mounds that were out at the property, and there was also some rock formations that are on the property that we really specifically identified and investigated. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Meg and Sarah, and they will take you through their studies and their findings, and they've submitted a report to Mass Historical Commission with their findings, and we'd like to present it to you tonight on where we're at.
And Mark, before you do that, I just want to recognize, in the audience tonight, we have members of our Historical Commission who are here.
Oh, great.
Our Chairman Steve O'Donnell, Ted Wendell, Wally Sisson, and others from the Historical Commission, and they may have questions. I think we do have copies of the report up at the table here for anyone who would like a copy of the archaeological report. Feel free to take them, follow this little stack of reports.
Yeah, I think Meg will go through an executive summary of the report, and certainly, I think, once we're done with that, however you'd like to proceed, but we're willing to answer as many questions as the public has or the Historical Commission or you trustees.
That's great. Thank you. Welcome.
I can't say that I'm a microphone proficient, so tell me if this is working. Okay. A little bit about us, we've been doing the business of cultural resource management or Archaeological and Historical Service for about thirty-five years. There's pretty much nothing we haven't seen. We specialize in Southern New England. We actually do more work in Massachusetts than we do in Connecticut where we're based. So we bring a lot of experience to the project, and we have a staff of eighteen historians and archaeologists. So this is what we do. So we go in the woods and we look at the funny things and figure out what they are. So what brought us here, as Mark was saying, is investigating stone features and mounds that were reported in the local news as being a potential concern as burials. And a little bit of background, I'm sure you all know that the town farm, the poor farm, is listed in the Massachusetts Historical Commission's Inventory of Historic and Archaeological Assets, and it's an inventory that's including thirteen components. And the town farm property itself, as well as these components, which are structural, including stone walls, the animal shelter, stable, pasture, and then two stone mounds that are identified as wood loading platforms. And that these components, as well as the property encompassed within it, have been determined to be eligible for the National Register of Historic Places. And in reviewing the project, MHC encouraged the project proponent, Pulte and the town of Milton, to consult with MHC, to, I'm quoting, "to eliminate, minimize, or mitigate adverse effects to historic resources within the boundaries of the project," unquote. So what we really did is take a look at the features that were a specific concern that were cited in newspaper articles, and to quote a little bit from them, I'm talking about, as a quote, "several small mounds of earth unusually uniform in size, all facing the same direction." And then as well as, quote, "another possible burial site, which mounds were larger, some covered with small rocks that appeared to be placed for purpose," unquote. And it had also been suggested that the two large stone features identified by MHC as wood loading platforms in the MACRS database are also possible Native American burial sites. So there is no mention of a Native American or other cemetery on the property in any town record, although local builders, according to the news reports, actually recorded, and recalled an oral tradition, at least fifty years old, of a Native American burial ground somewhere in the vicinity. And according to the news articles on John Peters, Executive Director of the Massachusetts Commission on Indian Affairs, was quoted as recommending that due diligence be done by contacting MHC, which we did. So we contacted MHC, and we wrote a proposal for investigating the mounds and the stone features to determine whether or not they are in fact burials. And we consulted directly with MHC on our proposed methodology, and we worked it out with them. MHC also instructed us to consult with Gilbert Solomon of the Massachusetts Ponca Park Tribe, and we did, and we contacted Mr. Peters. We then did a walkover survey of the property in which we noted a whole series of the mounds that matched the descriptions in the newspapers, and we noted these stone wood loading platforms, the stone features. And we also did background research to find out if we could figure out where the reported Native American burial sites in the vicinity were. And there are two recorded Native American burial sites, but not in the project area or immediately adjacent to the project area. And Mr. Solomon of the Ponca Park confirmed that he knew of no burial in the project area, in the Milton Town Farm. So we still did our due diligence in terms of documentary research by doing as much research as we could in historical sources, in ethnohistorical sources, in historic maps to make sure we aren't missing anything, weren't missing anything. And then we isolated a whole series and sample of mounds that matched the description in the news reports throughout the project area, but walked it over completely, and I think that was something like thirty-four acres?
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four acres. So we walked it over carefully. We found mounds, a whole series of mounds that matched the description, and we selected a sample to excavate, and then we actually removed the mounds. And our initial impression when we walked over was that the mounds, the earthen mounds, represented what are classically known as tree throws. And a tree throw is something when a tree blows down in a storm or falls down naturally, if you've ever seen it in the woods, the root ball comes up, you know, and then you see this concavity behind it, and then you see this sort of mound of earth pushed forward. And then when the tree eventually is taken away, you know, or just degrades and goes away, you're left with kind of a mound and then a little bit of a depression, which the depression slowly over the years will fill up with humus material, and then you'll see a slight depression, and then you'll see a mound. And I want to point out before I turn it over to Sarah that burials are not generally characterized by earthen mounds, because burials degrade, sink into the ground, so does the coffin, and they're more likely characterized by actually a swale and a depression, not a mound. That may be different when there's stones on top, but we actually examined some mounds that had stones on top as well, and all of them turned out to be classically consistent, completely consistent with a morphology associated with natural tree throws as a result of a blowdown. And Sarah can give you a little bit of a rundown for that.
Yeah, I mean, just to talk about tree throws in general, first of all, they're extremely common. I'm sure we've all seen them in the woods, you've just been walking around, and you know, you see the big ones when they're fresh, but these are the results of very old tree throws, and these mounds from tree throws can persist for decades or longer. They're very common. There's also well-documented evidence of, you know, them clustering in certain areas because there are particular weather phenomenon, such as nor'easters and ice storms and things like that, cause multiple tree throws in a given area. For example, in two thousand eight, there was an ice storm in Massachusetts near Sunderland, and they documented six hundred and ninety-four downed trees within like a one square kilometer area. So it's not uncommon at all to see these patterned and clustered like this. These are probably very old. They might date back to, you know, some of the old hurricanes from the earlier part of the century or something like that. We find them from the thirty-eight hurricane or the fifty-five hurricane rather frequently, I'd say.
Yes.
So it's possible that it relates to something like that or an old ice storm. Who knows exactly why, but everything about them is very consistent with tree throw morphology. We, the surface of them, you know, matches ones we've seen before in documented cases, and a lot of research has actually been done on tree throws by soil scientists and archaeologists. They've been excavated and, you know, profiled and photographed, and that comparative information is out there, and we use that to compare the excavations that we did on Milton Poor Farm. And, you know, everything that we saw was completely consistent with previously documented tree throws for all five of the, the five that we excavated, right? Do we excavate four?
No, we did five.
We found ten, I believe we excavated a sample of.
Uh huh. I mean, we moved them.
Yeah. But before we removed them, we bisected them so we could get profiles of them. So what you can actually see in a tree throw is that when the root ball comes up, it twists and it turns the earth in a very particular way, and if the tree has a deep root system, it'll go all the way down to the deepest layers of the subsoil and churn that soil up and kind of twist it around. It's a very distinctive profile, you know, and it's also very well documented. And that it's not at all what a burial looks like. We've had a lot of experience doing burial recovery projects, and it's a very, very different signature.
It is. There's no ambiguity about it.
No.
If you have a copy of the report, you can see some photographs in the back that show the profiles. It's just going to look like dirt to you, except for, you can photograph fourteen, and you can see.
What page is that?
Well, it's not a page.
It's in the appendix.
It's in the appendix, so it's a photograph, and then there's also figure six of the profile. So if you can, if you look at it, if you look at photograph fourteen, for example, I mean, you really can't see here, but you're just looking at dirt full of stone cobblestones, which you would never find in a burial. It just doesn't happen that way. They're completely unambiguous, and we should speak about the, about the stone piles, the stone benches that are, that are identified as wood loading platforms in the MACRS database. And we've tested around these very closely at the recommendation of MHC, and then we examined the mounds very carefully, and after thirty, forty years of walking in the woods, and we consulted with the methods of all of our projects, of walking in the woods and looking at features, and we firmly believe that these are the result of field clearing activities. They're identical in construction to the stone orchard wall. It is a unique kind of construction, and that's described in the report as well. And there's a lot of stone wall research that's been done, and that Sarah did also in terms of what type of wall that is, that matches the construction of the stone piles, the stone, so, my wood loading platforms. We don't think they're wood loading platforms. We think they're just a result of field clearing. They're made the same way. You know, when farmers, and it's notable too that they're, this is a woodlot. This was Governor Stoughton's woodlot. So they're not far from the only pasture and orchard where you really need to remove stones, because the rest of it's a woodlot. The pasture's for animals, and the orchard is for gathering, for gathering crew. So they're not far from that, and they match the construction of a very wide kind of classic double stone wall that's infilled with small stones. And it makes a difference that it's kind of a catchment. Sarah can explain it a little more, kind of a catchment kind of wall. It's a classic kind of construction technique that we see in New England. And the stone mounds are made the exact same way. It's what you do with your stones, you need to get them out of the way, and you don't want them to just pile up in a mound that's random, because it starts dribbling away and falling off. These are kind of catchment stone features, if you can explain it a little more.
Right, so basically what you do for these big stone walls is, if they're double row stone walls with larger stones on the outside, and you leave a space in the inside and just fill them up with the small ones, you know, like the field potatoes that pop up every freeze-thaw cycle, basically, they just toss them in there, and then they're contained, they're not like falling down and out. These square features are very similar. They're basically just stone containment units. You've got four walls. They're pretty uniform in size, pretty square. Larger stones on the outside, smaller ones filled in on top, and you can even see where one of them kind of got full, and some of the stones kind of ran down the edge and down the incline, because one of them's like right on the edge of a ridge in the project area.
Right. And there are photographs of those in the report as well.
And there's wire fence that's running right along the edge and almost like through one of these as well, so.
Right.
And we found, we excavated four test pits around each of them on each of the sides. The only artifacts we found were two pieces of nineteenth-century ceramic, you know, nothing else of that, nothing that would, you know, suggest anything Native American or anything even very ancient. It's relatively recent. In fact, historical information about the poor farm suggests that they built the orchard and a farm field in the eighteen-sixties, and it's very possible that that might be when these date to, because they probably would have built that orchard wall at that time, and given the similar construction, it's possible that these were built at the same time. So it's probably a mid-nineteenth-century feature would be my guess.
So with that.
With that.
What was the conclusion there? What were your, what were your findings?
Our conclusion and our findings suggest that there's absolutely no evidence for burials at the Milton Town Farm, poor farm. And after we completed our investigations, we did consult directly with Mr. Solomon of the Ponca Park Indians, and he agreed with our conclusions. He said that he had, he had no concerns that there were burials in the, in the project area.
Mr. Who?
Gilbert Solomon.
Gilbert Solomon.
Yep.
Now, this report has gone to the Mass Historical Commission.
Yes, it has.
It's under review, yeah. Can you add a little bit of detail about what the process there is?
Well, you, we submit a report to MHC, and then I believe they have sixty days to review, and we submitted it in October, so we haven't heard back. They typically respond strictly by letter, not by email or by phone, so expect a letter sometime soon. But since we followed their specific protocol, and we consulted with them directly beforehand and followed it through, we don't expect there to be a problem, you know.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for the archaeological consultants? Yes, Mr. Sisson, just for the, well, for the microphones, there's a.
It's a quick question.
Okay, and we'll repeat the question.
If it's a tree mound, as you say, then why would there be marker rocks on top of a mound?
So the question was, if it's a tree throw, why would there, a tree mound, why would there be rock marks on top?
But I, but I think that maybe we're, maybe you're confusing the stone mounds with the tree throws, because they're not the same. So if I go to this, this, these are the stone mounds that match the construction of the stone wall, and those stone mounds are about the height. These are the mounds, the earthen mounds, that we excavated, the red dots you see, except for actually this. This is just a, we found a little marker there that says Town Farm on it inscribed. But these are the mounds, and they're clustered probably for a reason, because of a blowdown event, which is why they're over here.
But the, the stone mounds, they're just loading platforms, right?
They're inventoried by MHC as stone loading platforms. I think panic objects came up with that designation as a possibility, since this was a woodlot. There's no, there's no direct documentary evidence that they're actually wood loading platforms, but it's possible, but we do believe that they're, they're certainly not burials, and that they, we believe that they're simply the result of field clearing activities. So there aren't any, none of these mounds have a bunch of stones on top, except for one mound that had just some field stone on top that wasn't placed in any particular manner. It was just the kind of typical stuff you'd find.
Is that mound five? Photograph ten from, of mound five had stones on top.
Right.
Those stones are basically rocks that were pulled up out of the ground as the tree.
When the tree came up.
Yeah, when the tree threw, and they just sort of ended up on the top.
And then it just got stuck on top.
They, I mean, when you looked at them out there in the field, they seemed just, and they're just rocks, that there don't, there's no pattern to them. They're just on top of this mound, and I think it's because of the way, you know, they just got pulled up and dumped.
Now, you physically did some digging, a little bit to determine?
Yes, we did them section by section, so that we didn't lose any part of it. We didn't just seem to, we just took them completely, absolutely sure.
All the way down through glacial soil.
Okay.
Just to be sure that there's, you know.
And there were no.
No cultural materials.
We found, it's just natural soils, sort of, you know.
Anyone else, any other questions or comments, or anyone from the Historical Commission? Any questions for the consultants?
Yeah, the only question I have, and maybe it's more of Mark, although it's really, I don't think part of this study, it's mentioned in the study, and that's the, the natural features that are considered historically significant. Could you go in a little bit in terms of how you intend to preserve those features?
I can. I guess the first thing I would say is that my company intends to utilize the services of Meg and Sarah to help guide us through the Mass Historical Commission process. So when we get into that, and we start to work with the local Historical Commission and certainly the trustees, maybe we'll be asking for, for guidance from, from AHS. But we did submit a project notification form to MHC earlier this year. It's one of their early things that we do when we're looking at a property, and MHC did come back, and they, and they identified, you know, eight, nine, ten different features of the property of the poor farm that are inventoried as historical. Some of the significant ones are obviously the structures that are there, the, the old houses that are, that are on the parcel that the, that the town is, is going to retain, on the four-acre parcel that the town's going to retain.
Mm-hmm.
So there's the, the main almshouse, and there's the men's almshouse, if I think I'm getting these right. There's a barn structure.
Right.
There's an animal shelter.
Which I don't think is, I hope it's not historic.
It, it.
No, no, I'm sorry, no.
No, I don't think so, but it is, it is mentioned in their letter. So those, so those, those four houses are on the parcel to be retained by the town. There's also a pest house, which is known as a pest house, that I believe somebody is living in today. There's a tenant in that today. Now, that house is in the, that is in the, the way of our development, and so we haven't fin, I just want to say, you know, for the local Historical Commission members here tonight, that we haven't, you know, finalized any of our proposals. We haven't really, you know, furthered these discussions with anyone because we wanted to get by the archaeological issues first. But now that I think we have a good handle on those, we'll certainly be coming in to, to refine our plan and to refine really the, the details of, of these historical features. But the pest house is proposed to be relocated. We do have a plan that shows the pest house to be relocated up into the existing field to the north of the, the animal shelter. So there's a, there's a field up there, and that's a concept that my company has in, in order to, you know, preserve the, the pest house. There's, there's some stone walls in the, in, around the site, you know, those we try to preserve as, as much as we can, although I'm not sure that any of the interior walls or many of the interior walls can be preserved at this point, but certainly we haven't refined our design in order to fully answer that question.
Okay.
And then there is the two loading platforms, or, you know, previously identified loading platform features that, that we spoke about earlier tonight, which we now think are really just field clearing techniques, and, you know, they're rock walls essentially. So those are, those are in the way, and they would need to be removed. And one of the things that we've talked to Meg about is the, the technique of removing those. I guess there's a, there's a process, and there's.
There is.
The photographs and identification, and you would, you would document those, and we would, we would work with.
So you'd replicate them elsewhere?
Well, actually, what MHC typically requires is, is they consider this an litigation of the adverse effect to historic resources, so that they usually look toward documenting them. So we, so we would photograph them and then probably take them down by layer by layer.
I see.
And they don't usually, they don't usually make you actually reconstruct them somewhere else.
Okay.
But I, I can't really speak for them.
Okay.
Okay, anyone else tonight, any questions or comments for the archaeological consultants? Nothing from the board? Okay, Ben, Ben, thank you very much. We know you came up from Connecticut tonight, so thank you for joining us.
It was a very thorough report, though.
Yes, it was very thorough.
Well, thank you.
Thank you for your report.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, we also have some meeting minutes to approve tonight. July twenty-ninth.
Move approval of the minute meetings of the trustees of Governor Stoughton Fund of June twenty-ninth, two thousand fourteen.
July twenty-ninth.
Oh, July twenty-ninth, two thousand fourteen.
Wait a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. September twenty-third.
Move approval of the trustees of Governor Stoughton Fund minutes for September twenty-third, two thousand fourteen.
Second. Any changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I move approval of the meeting minutes of the trustees of Governor Stoughton Fund for October seventh, two thousand fourteen.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Okay, so a motion to adjourn the meeting of the trustees of the Governor Stoughton Fund?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And now we will convene a meeting of the Board of Selectmen, and we will start tonight with approval of payroll and vendor warrants.
Move approval of payroll and vendor warrants, on the second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Future meeting dates, we have a meeting scheduled for December first and also for December ninth. The ninth, we may need to change, well, I guess we should discuss that. We, we may have to be at the Conservation Commission hearing on the ninth regarding Zero Central Avenue, so whether any of us need to be there or whether Joe Prondak or Bill Clark and others could handle it. The question is, do we want to reschedule from the ninth to the eighth in order to make ourselves available in case there's a need to be at the ConCon meeting?
Why do we need to be there, at the conservation?
I'm not sure that we do, but in case there's any questions or a need for the board or for the town administrator, meaning to be at that meeting rather than this meeting.
I should be available on the eighth, because it really wouldn't matter to me.
Yeah, I'm available too.
Okay, should we change to the eighth? So December first and December eighth.
Fine, I may.
Citizen speak. Do we have anyone tonight to address the board at Citizen's? Yes, sir. Would you like to come up to the microphone here, sir?
Hello.
Hello.
Paul Doherty, East of the South, and.
Um, Paul Doherty, East Missalab, and a town meeting member of the precinct. And I wanted to talk about the, um, sign approval of the next agenda. I know at the last town meeting, there was discussions of signs in the business district, and there's a lot of fuss and fear and the matter, but, um, much of the original article was adopted with stationary signage, dark sky compliant, you know, blinking, flashing, fluttering lights, et cetera. But, um, while the, the sign for approval tonight at, uh, Two Granite Avenue does not affect my property or my neighborhood, I'm just concerned about the effect on the town, and, and the slippery slope that we've gone down since the approval of the sleepy sign. And before that, the J. Kennedy, Kennedy Copper sign. Um, I have questions about the sign, um, you know, and it is, um, being asphalt by a tenant of the building. Uh, Mr. Flatley is here tonight, if he's part of that approval process. The sign is going to be, uh, eighteen by two feet, eighteen feet by two feet, and I think, uh, any bigger than that, you're, you're talking about billboard. And, um, I know it's going to be shining on the expressway, but, um, I just don't think that, uh, I, I wish that the board wouldn't approve this tonight. Um, it, does your approval make this sign permanent? Uh, so should this tenant leave in a year, is that sign still there? Does that sign come down? It seems odd to me that a law group would want an LED sign on the side of the building like that. I mean, most law groups I see in town, nice little sign on the side of the building, nothing fancy, nothing flashy. Um, and then if approved, I would hope that the selectmen would stick to the conditions they, they had placed on the sleepy sign in East Milton. That'd be off at eleven o'clock at night. And, uh, that, uh, these rules that, uh, you apply to sleepy key, be, uh, across the board in every business district in town. Not just East Milton Square. You have to be careful about having the discretion, well, it's going to be pointing at Quincy, it's going to be pointing at Dorchester. It, uh, it could be someday that, um, a piece of property in Quincy, like the Villa Rosa, should be sold, and someone might want to come in and put up a six-story building and point a sign towards East Milton. And I'm not sure, uh, how that would go down. All right, so, um, that's all I can say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Doherty. Anyone else tonight for Citizen Speak? Then seeing none, we will go on to the next item, which is a public hearing for an N Star grant of location. Uh, this particular property is very close to my house and a family member's house, so I'm, out of an abundance of caution, I'm going to be recused, and Mr. Cohane is going to handle the public hearing.
Okay.
Hello.
Good evening, my name is Renee Banks Clark, I'm here on behalf of N Star Electric to request a, uh, grant of location to install fifty-four feet of conduit in Reed's Dale Road, and that is to provide electric service to four new homes on Mary Webster Lane.
It's five new homes, isn't it?
Uh, five, uh, no, actually, I think it's four. I think initially the letter did say five, but our sketch shows that there are four.
Is this the women's club?
Yeah, the property, yep.
Is it five?
It says five here, but.
Okay, I think that was a mistake.
Okay. And Joe, you've re, you've reviewed the plans?
I am personally, but John Thompson does, who took routine at the department, he's satisfied with, with the proposal.
Satisfied, okay. Okay, can I interject?
I'm fine.
Okay, um, this is a public hearing, actually, is there any comment from the, from the public?
Hi, am I doing the topic?
Yes, you have, you have a comment on this, on the end?
No, I just, I just came because I got registered letter that was meeting here.
Oh, okay, so you can come up if you have a, if you have a.
Yeah, I'll stay.
Okay, all right.
All right, so I'll, um, I'll move to approve a grant of location to N Star Electric to install, uh, a fifty-fourth, uh, a fifty-four feet of conduit, uh, in a right-of-way to provide underground electrical service to the new Mary Webster Lane subdivision off Reed's Dale Road, uh, contingent upon the application securing a right-of-way excavation permit through the Department of Public Works, and holding a pre-construction meeting with the, uh, DPW's wire and special projects manager to review, uh, exact conduit and rise of locations to avoid potential interference with town's infrastructure prior to installation. I'll second that. Any comment?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
Great, thank you, have a nice, thanks.
Thank you, you too.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The next item on our agenda is, uh, a grant of easement for Schulman Way. Mr. Clark, I see Mrs. McCetrick is present. Uh, Marion, would you like to join us?
Hi, Marion.
Oh, and Miss, why don't we ask Joe Lynch, our DPW director, to come up in case there are any questions and join us at the table?
I'm sure there aren't any, but in the hearing case.
Good evening, Marion.
Good evening.
So this is, uh, something that we just acted upon at town meeting, and it's.
First time.
Now before the board for the first time, under the new town meeting authorization.
Right, and, and this is a very, um, I guess I'd call it sort of a small insignificant easement, but it's important to the Department of Public Works. Um, when, uh, Congregation Beth Shalom of Quincy applied for a special, uh, applied for subdivision approval from the planning board, we, as is required, went to the DPW and talked to them about our plans. And one of the things they requested was that although most of the utilities, um, on the site and the roadways will all be maintained by the owner, that the water pipes going up to the, to the fire hydrant would be, that we would grant an easement back to the town so that the town could maintain that line. And the reason for that is the town is responsible for how clean the water is, and they like to have control over flood, being able to flush hydrants and check the water for purity and that kind of thing.
So there will be a hydrant on the site?
There will be a hydrant on the site at the end of the roadway, which is very sure.
Yep.
And, um, so the process, it, um, would have had to be, as, as far as we could understand it, that the easement would have to be accepted by town meeting, and we would have had to wait, although we did have a small town meeting, as it turned out. Um, but the idea came about that it might be a good idea to allow minor easements that were being offered to the town at the request of the town, at least from my perspective, that's what I was looking for, um, be able to be accepted by the Board of Selectmen. So the town meeting did vote on allowing, um, Selectmen to accept easements, and I don't know if I'm the first one to come and ask for one, but.
You are indeed.
You are? You're the, you're a client, your client's easement is the one that prompted that article.
And I've provided the text of the grant of easement for your review, so if you have any questions about it, we're happy to answer them.
Okay.
Any questions or comments from the board?
I just, I want to, can you tell me again the benefit of having this easement?
Sure. It's actually the benefits to the town and not to the, uh, not to the applicant, not to the, the owner of the property. Um, the, there's a division between what is municipal water supply and the responsibility of providing clean and safe water. And by, by that virtue is, is nobody can access the water supply except for the town water department. So on a private way, you've got this, this length, it's a short length, mind you, of, of, of water main to a hydrant at the termination terminus of the cul-de-sac, at which point a service tap from the main to their property, to the, to the property proper, uh, extends. So the jurisdictional boundary is from the end of that cul-de-sac back out to the street, to the main street. And it's, it's that, once a year when we need to maintain a hydrant, I mean, by flushing our system and maintaining the hydrant, that we have access to do that. We don't allow a private citizen to operate a hydrant. By Department of Public Works, that's it, it's the people who operate hydrants. So with an easement, it allows us to be able to do that work. And it also gives us better control that if, you know, a leak in that pipe would otherwise go undetected on the private property, you know, on the temple property itself. Yet if there's a leak out there, it's part of our leak detection, we can monitor it, and we can determine if there's a leak. And then we can go in and, and we can make the repair, and, and then, you know, if it's, you know, defective workmanship, we can go back and, you know, get to the homeowner, but the reality is that we can control loss of water and water quality.
To the, to the hydrant.
To the hy, up to the hydrant, only the hydrant.
Right.
Beyond that's always going to be the responsibility.
It's still going to be a private way, but you have a utility easement.
That's correct, that's correct.
So, which brings me to my next question. I just built a house in Milton, and I was asked by the Fire Department to put in a, a fire hydrant at the end of this new private road, but nobody asked me for an easement. And there is a hydrant at the end of it. So technically, that's my hydrant, but I'm not allowed to maintain it.
Exactly the same situation, you're not, and you have firsthand knowledge on that circumstance, you're correct. You cannot maintain it, and as a private way without an easement in place, we ought not be on your property maintaining your property without an agreement in place, and an easement is such an agreement. So what happens, you know, over, all the time, you get decades and decades of nobody maintaining it, and then when the need to use that hydrant arises, God forbid, the, the question comes into, into play, is, is the hydrant adequate? You know, are you going to be able to get the flow out of it when needed? So, you know, it's, it's be really beneficial to the community to, to have that hydrant maintained on a regular basis. Turned once a year, flowed once a year, and that's hopefully needs to be done.
So what would be the procedure, would say, for me or for any other developer that has a, a private way with, with a hydrant?
Yeah, most private ways are, are laid out and prescribed, and, and in that layout and pres, and prescription of the way itself, the utilities within that way, in fact, come with responsibility, ownership. Typically, it's only the water issue that comes to mind, and it's exactly the, the reason why, given the Board of Selectmen the authority to approve it, rather than waiting six months or a full year to go to a town meeting to have these things, uh, clarified. So the, the procedure would be to have your surveyor, you know, in your circumstances, have a surveyor come in and, and lay out, uh, a corridor five feet of either side of the main, ten feet wide, up to the hydrant, and create a document that simply allows us to go in and, and maintain and repair and, and, um.
And flush it out once a year or something?
Exactly.
Okay.
And they grant, you know, grant access for that purpose.
If it's a recorded plan already, and it has water lines on it, then you, you simply have to refer in the grant of easement to the recorded plan, but if you don't have a recorded plan for the roadway, you have to record something.
I do have a recorded plan.
So I think that's, it's a simple grant similar to the one that I gave you today, um, from you as the owner. You're the owner of the property.
Yeah.
Uh, to the town, and the town would want to review the grant, I suppose. But it, but I suppose if what I provided today is acceptable, it would be similar.
Why, I don't want to rehash town meeting, but why it's, it becomes an issue in two thousand fourteen and hasn't before now is it seems that the trend has been developments coming in now are, in fact, many private ways. You're not seeing any full-fledged, flung subdivisions coming in designed as public ways to be accepted at town meeting as a public way. When that is done, we accept all the utilities as well. So we're not seeing as many of those, the trend is just the opposite to its private way. So to do these on an administrative basis with the Board of Selectmen makes sense, rather than packaging them all up and once or twice a year go-to-town meeting and ask for them is just far more efficient.
So Joe, your recommendation would be that the board accept this easement?
Yes, it is.
Do we have any other questions or comments?
No.
And we have a motion.
I'm the motion to accept a grant of easement for water pipe maintenance on Schulman Way, the future site of the Congregation Beth Shalom of the Blue Hills.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mary.
Um, Joe will stay with us because he's also here for the next item on the agenda, which is the water infrastructure improvement contracts.
Um, speaking of town meeting, we addressed the board authorization at town meeting. At that time, we had gone out to bid, uh, for two components of the three major components of that project, and those two being a water main replacement piece and the installation of a pressure-reducing valve, uh, up at Metropolitan Avenue. Uh, those bids were opened on, uh, twenty-third? They were open just be, just before town meeting.
Yeah.
And, um, I don't have the date, October ninth, excuse me, they were open on October ninth. Um, I think in your package, you have the bid tabulation and a detailed, uh, background check from Beta Group for the various bidders, and you have, uh, their ultimate recommendation, and then you have John Thompson's summary letter, which, which I completely agree with. Um, so we're looking to award, uh, the water main replacement contract to S and B General Contracting for the amount of two million, three hundred and thirty-one thousand, three hundred and fifty-two dollars and ninety-two cents. Um, and also the contract for the replacement of the, excuse me, installation of the, uh, pressure-reducing valve on Metropolitan Avenue to A Vozella and Sons, and for that price of two hundred and ninety-four thousand, two hundred and thirty-one dollars and sixty-three cents.
Was that the lowest bid?
Those were the both.
Yep.
Yeah, they were, they were the lowest bids. We had some very, very good, uh, grouping of pricing, so we found that it was extremely competitive, extremely accurate, and fell within a, uh.
That was my next question.
Estimates.
Yeah, we was very close to, was it below the estimates?
Um, I'm just, I'm just opening that sheet up.
Okay.
Um, the water main replacement project, including, at this point, we're still with a ten, we take a twenty percent contingency, turn it into a ten percent as construction moves forward, and that covers, uh, traffic details and whatnot. Uh, we are, on the water main replacement, about two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars below what we had budgeted in that project, but on the pressure-reducing valve, we're twenty-four thousand dollars over, um, most of which is attributed to, um, you know, the, the contingency and the police details. So, you know, net, we're, we're still two hundred thousand dollars to the good.
Below, yeah.
And we have not, um, we haven't even put the tank replacement on, on, out to bid yet.
Now, both of those going to be fully bonded, or, or will some of that come out of a, the interest free loan?
Um, the bond authorization at town meeting was five point four million dollars, if you recall.
Right, and it was.
The total, total estimated project cost.
Was six something?
Six million, oh, sixty-five.
Right.
Right, so all but five point four million would be done with funds on hand, you know, from various places that we have them. Uh, but we do have the authorization for five point four million. Uh, so anything, anything that we have in savings is going to simply reduce what ultimately will be.
Bonded.
What we need to go out to bond when we hit the market.
Okay, okay, so we're going to use the interest free loan first?
That is correct.
Yes, okay.
Oh, yeah, we're still using our NWA money, uh, in, in our local, local capital money first, we were.
Okay.
That is correct.
Okay. Uh, just out of curiosity, Joe, uh, when you get cost, do you get independent cost estimates for any construction project like this? In other words?
When you say independent, uh, if it's a design project we've done at house, we do our own cost estimates. So we work from databases from our prior bids, and we also monitor, uh, C I N Journal, it's a weekly publication of construction industries in Massachusetts, so we, we're keeping track of the unit pricing competitiveness on a day, on a weekly basis.
Gotcha.
So we do our own internal estimates, in this particular instance, where we use the consultant to do the design.
They did the.
They, we use theirs.
Okay.
Um, they were remarkably good, we're very good, they're just a little bit better.
Good. And how much was that design?
Uh, total design?
Approximate, yeah.
Um, I have that number handy, I have design and, well, the design for the water main replacement is a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. The, the others, I have design and construction services combined together, so I don't, I don't have a net number for the pure design.
How do you, how do you pay for that, then, a hundred and twenty-five thousand?
That's all part of this total project cost, that's all part of that six point zero, six five million.
I got you.
Total, right, it's entire package. So that's design, construction services, actual construction, police details, uh, repave of the roadway and restoration.
These are pretty good bids, I mean, you're ten bids.
Do you see how tight they are?
They're pretty tight, yeah.
It's, it's, uh, it makes you feel good when you know that you get, it's, people are real, real competitive, and you can tell who was very, very interested in getting it, and leaving short money like that on the table.
Yeah.
Very, very encouraging.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Uh, yeah, I'll move to award, uh, contracts to S B General Contracting, Inc., uh, for installation of water mains on Canton Ave, Harland Street, Uncletty Road, and Forest Street, uh, and to A Vo- Veleza?
Vozella.
Vozella and Sons, Inc., uh, for the installation of a pressure-reducing valve and vault on Metropolitan Avenue as recommended by, uh, Town Council, uh, Town Consultant Beta Group, uh, to serve dependency, uh, to sever dependency on, uh, water mains located in the town of Canton.
On second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
And Joe, you're here also for number eight, which is the N Star mitigation request.
Yes. Um, this one was put on the agenda pretty, pretty recently, uh, Monday morning, in fact, and it doesn't require a vote of the Board of Selectmen, but our, we have some underlying concerns with, um, the, these viability and the, and the longevity of the million-dollar Mass Works Grant that we ha, uh, we've received from, from, from the state. Um, the concern is that there is a trend, change of administration coming up, and we've done all of our engineering work, and we're, we've actually gone out to bid, and this board has voted. and this board has voted to make the award. We're in the midst of awarding that contract and signing up and getting all of their bond paperwork in place. The concern is we haven't physically broken ground. So one aspect of this project, in addition to the construction piece of it, is that we're going to be, our proposal is to remove four, three telephone poles between Pine Tree Brook on Elliot Street, which is at Matthews Bob's Shop, if you know the area, and those, that whole block leading up past Sullivan Insurance.
Joe, I think you mean Brook Hill Road?
It's Brook Hill Road, Pine Tree, Pine Tree Road itself, not Pine Tree Brook Road, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, Brook Hill Road, Matthews Bob's Shop, Tino's, Radio Coffee House, Liquor Mart and Sullivan Insurance. There are poles that are coming out there and those wires that are hanging from those poles will be lowered and put down in existing conduit that's already in the ground that we'd put in there seven years ago. The town at that time used the NSTAR mitigation fund for the purpose of putting the conduits in, but as part of the bigger project, didn't find it made sense for them to put the wires underground at the time. So now that this is the last element of that project, I say the last element is because there was a P W E grant on Adam Street, which made a bunch of street scape improvements, if you recall. There was a central business district improvements that were made seven or eight years ago. And this piece, this P W E grant ties those two project locations together. It's the full length of Bell Street between those two areas. So in that area, we're creating a parklet bump out plaza, very similar to the plate across the street, in the street event. And it's gonna give that same plaza feel where Radio Coffee House and Tino's can put cables out and have a little, you know, little parklet area where people can, you know, congregate, not on a day like today, but in the summertime, hopefully, really enjoy it. So the thought was, is that to absolutely demonstrate and commit to the state that, you know, Milton is serious about this project where we are in fact moving forward with this electrical work this winter. And I want to be able to send a letter off to the folks at Economic, Executive Office of Housing and Economic Development to say that, yes, we are committed. We are continuing to make progress and in fact, we have funded this NSTAR project because the next step for NSTAR is to be able to get down and do real detailed estimates. Right now, they've only estimated that this would be less than three hundred thousand dollars to do. We hope it's considerably less than three hundred. So to that point, my letter, I think is all in your packet, is that back in two thousand five, Milton and NSTAR reached an agreement as far as mitigation for a major construction project that NSTAR had ongoing. They put up to the town one million, three hundred eighty thousand, four hundred dollars to our town to be used for various street lighting, power conversion, traffic lighting and burial of conduits. And that money's been used down on Canton Ave. with Uncquity in the Parkway. It's been used at Brook in the Parkway and it's been used on the P W E grant portion over on Adam Street and putting those conduits in down on Central Ave. So this, that one point three million, one point four million dollar infusion of capital is now whittled down to a balance as of this week of two hundred and thirty-two, eight thirty-nine, ninety-three. And I just wanna vote of the board, not authorize it because it's already, that authority already exists, just to say that you validate the use of that money for this particular project. And then I can pass that information along to the state.
That's pretty comprehensive and.
I'll move to appropriate balance, two hundred and thirty-two thousand, eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars and ninety-three cents of NSTAR mitigation account. Account number five, two, one, nine, oh, dash, three, oh, one, dash, one, two, two, to the upcoming street scape improvements along Elliot Street.
Well, second, and a comment. You're not to exceed three hundred thousand.
Yes.
What if your bids come in at two sixty, two seventy? Where do you get the balance?
This is just the remaining balance in this account.
I understand.
Within that million dollar project, we had always anticipated tapping this out.
Yep.
We also have the hundred and forty, hundred and forty-five thousand dollar gift that was on the Milton Hill House.
Right.
And we have the million dollar grant. So total net, with the construction costs, we have the three hundred thousand dollar estimate. And in allowance for police details, we still believe we're within, not comfortable, within like a, like a half a percent of contingency at this point.
Yeah, I get it. So this is really just to close the account?
It's to close the account out and to demonstrate to the state that there's a definitive motion by, on behalf of the town to move this project forward.
Okay.
Okay, then if no other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe.
Is there anything else for you tonight?
I don't think so.
I don't think so.
I will say good night.
Good night, Joe. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the Two Granite Avenue signage request. And we're joined by our planning director, Bill Clark. Good evening, Bill.
Good evening. Ketch's Law Group has made a request. They appeared before the sign review committee. Sign review committee voted unanimous, unanimously for, geez, they're twenty-four inch letters. It's an eighteen foot text. It fits in a twenty foot pan and it's on the, it's on the picture that's there. I'll give you this one. This is, it is, these lights are, they're halo lit. Halo lit would be that.
There's light behind the lettering?
It's behind the light. It's not the light itself. So the one that I pass you has, the B is a halo lit letter. The S is a, that's a lit letter. That, that letter would shine where the other one just gives the imprint of the letter itself.
Yep. The lighting technology, is it, is it LED or is it?
It's LED.
The light behind it, okay.
So which one are they going with though?
The B.
The B.
The halo.
That's better, yeah.
They have twenty-four inch letters. They are, they did ask if they could put it directly into the granite that's on the side of the building. Mr. Flatley felt that it would be too many holes in the building. So he asked them to redesign it and to put it into a pan, to make that pan, it's a signed pan aluminum. It's to be painted the same color as the rose granite that's up there now.
Can I ask, what was the request again, Mr.?
The individual letters. If you look at the big picture, you'll see the detail. On that detail is how the letters get lit. It's all those pins in the back.
Yeah.
Those pins would have gone through the granite to hold the letter in place.
I got you.
And then there would have been another set of holes to go in for the electric wire to light up the lights.
So now, most of those holes are just in the pan and a few holes in the building.
Now he only has that four for the pan at work, probably about eight for the twenty foot pan.
Because of the size of the sign, I got two questions on the size. Number one is, I remember on the, on the sleepy sign, maybe that was because it went above the roof line. It had a windshield testing or whatever it was.
That's because of where it was placed. This is actually built into the side of the building.
So it does not require that.
No.
In terms of sign design guidelines, is, is the size of this sign compared to the structure within the, well, within the?
Well, well within it. It's, it's much lower. The percentage is minimalistic.
It doesn't look obtrusive at all.
No.
Not at all.
I mean, you don't see it from the houses here in Milton.
Right.
Right.
You're not shining it at any one place except for the highway.
And it's even on the side where the Keystone Building in Dorchester.
They don't see it.
They don't see it either.
And the sign will be turned off at night?
That was not a question that was asked of the sign review committee. I did send that back to the sign company. They haven't answered me yet. This is their only signage, so.
I don't see any real need to have it lit at two o'clock in the morning.
No.
Bill, what is the situation with the extra storage space sign?
I believe that one goes all the time. I don't see that one getting shut off. But I don't spend, as Tom just said, two o'clock in the morning. It's not, I'm not driving down to look at it.
I hope he's stealing a ride.
All right, I'll think about it.
There was a resident tonight at Citizen Speak who you heard. Do you have any response to any of his questions or comments?
I don't think that it's shining towards residences, whether it's in Boston, Quincy or Milton. I think it's again, one of those unique sighting lines that, this one aims towards the expressway. It's meant to hit the expressway. This is a very large part of our taxes here in town. Whatever we can do to keep that building filled is a good thing. This particular law firm took the entire fourth floor.
This sign, unlike the former sleepy sign, will not be flashing, right? This will just be a stationary sign with lighting behind the letters.
The letters don't move, the letters don't flash, the letters come on, you know, during the day. It doesn't have to be lit. It's at night, it's the same type of halo lighting that's won at Extra Space Storage, Milton Hospital. Milton Hospital's lit all night and that's actually in a residential neighborhood and nobody even knows that it's a halo lit sign.
Now, which Milton Hospital sign are we talking about? The one?
One on Reed Stell Road.
On Reed Stell Road, yeah. And I suppose there's a reason for that. They are open twenty-four seven, so.
Now, what was the vote on the sign review committee?
There were three members to the committee and one abstained to vote it in favor.
He was absent.
He's absent because his, his firm represents the sign company. He's going nowhere near it.
Okay.
I would be inclined to support it provided it's not lit twenty-four seven.
I guess the question is, what's the harm in it being lit twenty-four seven? If the sleep, if the, if other signs are lit twenty-four seven and this is not facing a residential area.
My understanding, don't we have to grant special permission? The, the bylaw is off by eleven, I believe. Is that the new bylaw?
Was, was Sleepy's, wasn't Sleepy's midnight?
Yeah, but, but isn't, the new bylaw though is, which this would be subject, we can override it. But otherwise, I believe the new bylaw said it had a specific time.
I think you attached a bill. Let me just, you should just pull it up.
Having to get the new one.
Sleepy's is different because it's, it's facing a residential neighborhood.
Well, and it was pre-bi law too, so.
But this is, this is facing the highway.
But we did have the new bylaw.
This was nine, this was filed nine, ten.
Materials, I don't see them.
I can go and get it.
I know that one of the questions that Paul had was about Mr. Flatley. Mr. Flatley is the one who signed the application.
The owner of the building?
Yes. So he absolutely knows it. He's also the one that specifically said, you know, punch in that many holes in my, my Italian rose granite panels.
When is this tenant moving in? Are they already occupying this floor?
They, they're not occupying the building. They have a, they have a building permit to retro top floor. Their architects have already been in, they've already done it, they've already taken their measurements, they're starting to build out on the second, on the fourth floor now.
So when are they expected to move in?
Springtime.
Okay, so is there any urgency in approving this tonight?
I think they wanna get the sign up because they are, they will be in there, but.
Let me just, I've got the thing up now.
Give it most current one?
We'll go with what they, what the new bylaw says and if they wanna change it, they can come back and ask for it.
But I think the new bylaw did, you know, if it would be after business hours. And that will be, business hours for this, for this particular use would be different than business hours for the sleepy sign. So I, I think it's worded that.
Regular, yeah, during regular business hours.
The board would have to act to allow it to be illuminated before or after regular business hours.
Yes. And I would say unless they can provide us with a need for.
We think you put, Blue Hill Bank went up at, because it's over at eleven in the back of the building. Sleepy goes off at midnight. The gas stations go off and they close.
So Bill, did the sign review committee look at that issue of the hours?
They did not look at the hours.
Is there a request in the application for hours?
No.
So I think if there isn't a request, we should just go with the bylaw for now.
Okay.
And.
Yeah, I mean, I could see if they wanna request, I mean, you know, if, if normal business hours probably don't extend really much into the night. I mean, they're probably a nine to five business for the most part. I mean, I could, I could, I could see if, if they wanna request that, you know, having it for a reasonable period of time at night, but.
If, if I fill out the application and I knew the bylaw and I wanted to extend what the bylaw, I would have put it in the application. So the way they filled it out just tells me that they wanna go with, approved in the town already.
Right.
When was the bylaw, or when was the application submitted? Was it before or after the town meeting?
Before, nine, ten, September tenth.
Although warrant was in press, in print at that point.
And I say if they wanna extend it, let them come back in front of us and we can make that determination at that point.
I would say so, yes.
Yeah, I think the only question is normal business hours for this particular use. It's not entirely clear.
Right, I mean, I think.
There probably are.
Nine to five, probably.
Well, or maybe six or seven or eight. It depends. It really would depend on the particular, we'd have to ask the tenant, really.
But I, I mean, I could certainly understand wanting to have it, you know, till nine, ten, even maybe eleven o'clock at night.
Right, but we don't know that.
We don't know that, no. So I agree, we probably should, if they want it to be on business hours, let them request it.
But I would make, I'd make a motion to re-approve it now the way it's written and like we said, if they wanna.
I guess we can, but with the understanding that it'd be off by when they're closed.
Right, whatever the bylaws is.
Yeah, that's why I think a specific time would be better because, you know how it is, you have a small business. When you're closed, is that when the reception desk closes or is it when the last person leaves the building at night, which could be eleven o'clock at night? So.
Right.
You might have a client coming to the office looking for directions to get to the location from off the highway. So I think, I think those are issues that need to get explored.
I think the eleven o'clock one is, is the best one. And if they want more, they have to come back.
I'd go along with that.
I'm fine with that.
That's the time for most of them, so that seems reasonable.
From six AM to eleven or something like that?
I know a lawyer that was working at eleven o'clock last night.
So we have, we have a draft motion to approve the lit signage request. The request doesn't have the specific time request.
We can put it in.
So we should revise the motion to set some parameters.
I'll make a motion to approve the lit signage request of Ketch's?
Ketch's.
Ketch's Law Group at Two Cannon Ave. to be lit from six AM until eleven PM as previously approved by the sign review committee.
Uh, second.
Okay, so I guess for discussion purposes, if we're saying as previously approved, the sign review committee didn't actually approve those hours in six, we don't really know if that's what they.
Well, maybe it's said it's previously, it's previously approved by the sign provided that the sign not be illuminated beyond eleven PM at night.
The motion also has a starting time at six AM.
Do we need a starting time?
The question is, is that something that they might even be asking for?
The only time you'd need that is in the beginning of October. That's the only time you would.
When it's dark, yes, at seven o'clock.
You would light it at six o'clock. Putting in there, you know, six to eleven is, is, is fine. I mean, the rest of. Now, at six o'clock in the morning, it's off. But through the month of October.
Right.
It would be lit.
Yes, it's not the type of sign you're gonna keep lit during the day.
It shuts off anyways because there's a light sensor to it.
Well, I was saying six o'clock because that seems to be a busy time for traffic going into Boston.
Right.
Yeah.
They can advertise it.
All right, so I guess then the only thing would be just to, to, it takes a friendly, to approve a lit sign, signage request of, is it Ketch's Law Group at Two Granite Ave. as previously approved by the sign review committee provided that the sign remains lit only from the hours of six AM through eleven PM.
I'll accept that as a friendly amendment.
Okay, any further discussion? If we do wanna have them, if they, when this is communicated, Bill, who will be the person? Would it be you communicating this to the tenant?
Yep.
So I think if they have different hours that they wanna request.
Come back to the board.
Yeah, and I wonder whether we should ask the sign review committee to look at it first and take a, what the signs are on other locations, what the lighting time is for the ones you mentioned, possibly for some others that we may not be thinking about. And that way. We may not be thinking about, in that way, try to take a uniform approach to it or consider what the extenuating circumstances might be in a particular case.
Now, Bill, is, is the purpose of sign review committee only design guidelines or, or, or does it consider the entire bylaw? In other words, do they consider things like the time a sign is lit?
They'll do that too.
They will, okay, okay.
I think going forward, it would be helpful if the sign review committee looks at that type of an issue too, before something like this comes into us and we're raising questions about timing and we don't know what the tenant's real request is.
Right, the, the other problem we have with, with the bylaw too is, is that it does include, get to the bylaw again.
They just met after the last town meeting, when these things were changed. So they haven't taken up the issue of the new bylaw yet.
The, the, the concept of dark sky compliant, we don't have a clue what that means.
Well, Bill described it as.
I do, but that's not it, that.
It's a different type of lighting, isn't it?
Right. No, but, but I'm, I'm saying, you know, if, if the sign review committee, those types of things that are vague.
They absolutely know what it is.
Right.
Oh, you mean in another circumstance?
Yes, yeah.
Because I don't think that applies to this particular.
No, no.
Not in this particular case, I mean, go in an airplane and look down, are you going to see this light? No. You, you may see the letters, but you're not, you're not lighting the sky with it. It's, it's a streetlight. Use the ones down in Central Ave because they, they, they have a, they have a top, but also there's glass that goes up, so it lights straight up. That's not dark sky compliant. If there was a hood that went over the whole thing, that pushed all the light down, that's dark sky compliant. The stuff at the police station, those new lights at the police station, those are dark sky compliant. If you were to drive over an airplane, you wouldn't see them, you'd see something lit down there, it's not lighting up, not lighting the sky.
Okay, so Bill, if you could communicate to them just to look, when the next time they get, the committee gets a sign review request, to try to look at some of these ancillary issues so that.
Yeah.
We don't want to make these things up on the fly, you pick hours that may or may not make sense for a particular tenant.
I don't want to hear what a high intensity light is either.
So let's ask them to help us out and do a broader review maybe of some of these applications, even if it means going back to the applicant and asking them to clarify some of these requests.
They'll, they'll ask more.
Okay.
Questions to.
It'd be helpful for the board. Because we're not sign experts here, they are.
I understand that, but they didn't, they weren't looking at it from the new, bylaw point of view, they were looking at it from the old.
Okay, then we have a motion pending, any other discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. All right, Bill, you're going to stay with us for the next two items. Eighty-eight Milton Street, a conservation restriction.
Conservation Commission had an enforcement order against eighty-eight Milton Street. I want to say ninety-seven, and it was long drawn out, the property has since been sold. There's a lot of contention between the new owners and the, the past owner. They came to an agreement if the commission would work out a deal with the new owners. The new owners and the commission did come up with an agreement, there is a cash piece that goes with this and then there's a conservation restriction. Conservation restriction language was originally written by the new owners' bank. I took that, gave it to town council. John Flan looked at it, he made his changes, we sent it back and forth, it went to the commission, it went to the, to the new owners and it went to their bank, everybody was happy with the new language.
Why was it written by a bank?
The new owners bought the house and then went for a construction loan. Because of the agreement that they had, that put a conservation restriction on part of the property, the bank felt that it diminished the value of the property. And they did not want to see that happen. The conservation restriction doesn't do that, so they, they were giving it easements and other things, there were just, a lot of different language changes. Right behind every one of your computers is a brand new plan and that plan shows where the conservation restriction piece is, it's the highlighted piece. The left-hand side of the page.
So almost half an acre?
Yes.
At the, at the corner of Milton Street and Brushhill Road.
Yeah, point four four acre. It is.
So this is just putting a deed restriction on, on.
Putting a conservation restriction on the property. Now, the, the big change that John put on there was under purposes, the bank didn't really know what the purposes were, so John fit in what the purposes were. You have copies of the final language. If you look at the language, it says that it, it ups Town of Milton land already. It is within the Bolster Brook watershed. It's, Bolster Brook empties into the Naponton River, one piece of property away. It's by Paul's Bridge, so there's a historic nature to it. And also the twenty-foot wide, it's NDC, so it's NWRA sewer line easement goes through the property there. And that's a, that goes back to eighteen eighty-four, so it's a very deep, very old sewer easement. Connects up to the pump house over on Paul's Bridge. And this is an area that is fairly wet anyway, so it's not that we're going to be building in it, but we're now not going to see anything changing down there vegetation wise.
Question, I, I mean, obviously anybody has the right to put a deed restriction on their property, why, why did the selectmen have to approve a deed restriction?
Because this one has to go to the, when you put a conservation restriction on it, it goes to the Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs.
So it becomes absolutely permanent, that it can't be.
Stays on the property.
Bill, is, is this, is this all resulting from the fines that the Conservation Commission imposed on this property?
Yes.
That they did not pay?
Yes.
So.
They're paying too.
They're paying, how much are they paying?
Seventy-five thousand.
The initial fine was about two hundred thousand, was it?
More, I'm guessing, there, there was a bit of a miscommunication in what that number could be, it could be anywhere from three to five.
Can you explain, just to tell the public, why this property was leased by the town, what they did, caused this fine?
The previous owner hired a caretaker, the caretaker went down and decided to, in his words, daylight the stream. So he cut back the vegetation along the stream on both sides.
Have you, have you guys been to the property?
Yeah, well, I, I know what the property is, yeah.
He, he cut the trees on either side of the stream, there were a lot of deadfalls in that area and he took everything that was in the water out of the water. His, some of the comments that he was making were, the stream keeps moving around and taking our land. Well, the idea of a meandering stream comes because streams are not meant to be in channelized areas, they do meander, they do move. Depending on the amount of water that comes down in a particular year, the stream could move, it, it has different functions. If something happens to the bank, well, it moves a little bit more. He didn't want the bank to, he didn't want the stream to move outside of its banks, so he tried channelizing in certain areas, he cut down the vegetation, he cut back the canopies. And then he went and he put fence around all of Dr. C's property and the Town of Milton's property. Because Town of Milton owns down at Brushhill and Milton Street, down on the corner. So the commission came in and said, you know, hold the show, you, take your fence out of the resource area, take it off of the town land. You know, put it on your line down Milton Street, that was fine, but the stuff that's in the resource area had to come out. They never took the fence out of the resource area. They did take it off of the town land, but they didn't take the fence post, they didn't take certain sections of the fence out of the resource area. So the fines ran. Because it was an enforcement order, the original owner appealed the enforcement order to DEP, but it got filed under the local bylaw, which means it's a superior court. That trumps DEP and DEP couldn't do anything about it. So it has been running all this time, Dr. C didn't see fit to do anything about it. Commission didn't give up on its enforcement order when the property sold. They enacted the.
So the enforcement order was there.
Yes.
When they did a title search.
Yes.
But they paid cash for the house, so obviously they didn't have to pay the fine at that time.
Right.
Then they went to get a construction loan.
Well, they made an agreement with Dr. C that, they, they knew this was there, they weren't going to say, oh, hold on, we're not ready to pay that kind of a fine. They made a deal with Dr. C, they made a deal with the commission that, you know, look, let's, let's find out how we get around this, what, you know, let's, let's come to an amicable solution here. The cost of the lawsuit, the cost of replication in this area, the commission felt that it was getting a better, you know, a good deal, picking up the conservation restriction. Getting the seventy-five thousand that can go into a conservation fund that they already can spend it X amount a year per town meeting.
To be honest, I'm not sure if it's a good deal for the town at all, because, I mean, this is a useless piece of land, you, you have a sewer easement going right through it. It's all wet, you have a stream right there, it's basically useless, nobody can build on it anyway, no matter what happens. So the town is basically paying about two hundred thousand.
No, 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 it's not our land.
They're deeding it to the town, right?
No.
There's, there's a restriction on it.
There's a restriction.
To the tune of about two hundred thousand.
Yeah, but it's their land, they're still paying the taxes on it, not us.
No, I understand, but we're getting a, a conservation restriction on it.
Yep.
And forgiving about two hundred thousand.
Yep.
In fines, on a piece of land that they can't build on anyway. You know, I would rather get all the money and, and not put any restriction on it.
I think we'd have been wrapped up in lawsuits.
Forever.
But.
I think so.
I, I also did not do the negotiating, I had nothing to do with the negotiating. Mine was to, you know, get this signed by the commission and the selectmen and just get the enforcement order vacated.
I'm going to go along with it, I'm just saying.
I, I hear you.
I'm giving the other side.
As one of the original people who signed that enforcement order.
Yeah.
I'd rather be in your shoes, but at the same time, I do understand the, the hassles of litigating these kind of fines.
From what I understand, the, you know, these enforcement orders, the courts tend not to take them tremendously seriously.
It's a settlement, I think, yeah.
Well, this is, this is a decision by the Conservation Commission, they've already voted to accept this settlement.
Yes.
And it's.
They signed the document last night.
They did sign it last night, okay, we have an unsigned copy in the, in our files.
Paula has the copy for you to sign.
Okay, so this needs our signature as well as the DEP.
I'm going to approve a conservation restriction for eighty-eight Milton Street that will allow the town to retain these land and water areas in their natural scenic and open condition.
Now, a second round, whatever that means.
Any discussion on the, it's a motion to approve a conservation restriction. And so, Bill, the Conservation Commission, I just want to repeat that, they were the ones who negotiated the settlement?
Yes.
And they approved this and they're recommending this to the board?
Yes.
Okay, any other discussion?
No.
Then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. The next item on our agenda is, it's not a full quarterly report from the planning director, but we asked him to give an update on a few current projects that are. Either may have some potential developments or are currently active and, so Bill, I think you know you have three or four items you want to give us a, a brief report on to update the board and update the public who are watching.
Okay. You asked me for three specific projects and one was the East Milton Parking and Access project. The twenty-five percent design plans include what the cover will look like, the general notes that go with it, the, the key plans, the typical sections with all the different pavement notes. In other words, peeling back the onion and what does each layer say. The baseline tie plans, how the whole thing's tied to the walls, how the walls are tied down to the highway. The construction plans, the utility plans. Our water, NWRA's water, our sewer, the electric, everything that's in there for us and for the highway itself. There's a pavement marking and signage plans, in other words, what is the, what are the lines in the street going to look like? What are the signs, the street signs going to look like? There is a traffic signals plan. For as much as we don't know the type of, the type of sign, traffic light that's going up, we know what the traffic light will do. There's temporary traffic controls, they're mostly identified during the staging and most of that detail comes out during the seventy-five percent plan. They call us a twenty-five percent plan, but it's usually more like a fifty percent design plan. The detail gets, they provide much more detail than is actually required. The submittal also includes the preliminary right of way plans, the roadway cost estimate. Mass DOT's early environmental checklist and associated documents, that would be the states issuing for stormwater issues. The categorical exclusion checklist, which is, it's the, it's state regs versus fed regs, which ones have to come in, which ones have to go out. There's a Mass DOT twenty-five percent design checklist, there's a twenty-five percent water quality data form, in other words, with stormwater, how are we addressing it? How are we cleaning it, we want to make sure that it's cleaner going in than come, coming out than going in. And twenty-five percent pavement design checklist. That goes back to the design rigs that's there. Howard Sign Hudson expects to turn this in next week, the plan, the construction plans, all the engineering plans are due. To that particular stage at Howard Sign Hudson on Friday morning, they will put the packet together and deliver it next week to, to, to Mass DOT. Depending on when the turnaround is, we're looking for a January twenty-five percent hearing. We don't get to say, set the hearing date, Howard Sign Hudson doesn't get to set the hearing date, the hearing date is set completely by Mass DOT. They'll call us, probably ask for a room, ask for a location, we come up with a couple of different options.
And that, Bill, is a little bit later than what we had reported at a prior meeting, right, when we talked about it being before year end, so.
You're right.
A little bit behind schedule, but nothing we can do about it.
There's nothing, it's not like they're sitting on it and the amount of documentation that they have to come up with is, is pretty severe. I mean, they've had to go and pull back, it, it's not just looking in to see what's there, it's going back and finding all of the old plans for the deck area. They've gone back and compared what those old plans are versus what was actually built. It's going back and looking at, there's a couple of, I believe they have cracked storm drains. And it's something between us and Mass Highway. And Mass Highway keeps pointing back and saying, no, it's a town line, town goes back and says, no, it's a Mass Highway line. Howard Sign Hudson had to go find out who it was and whoops, it's Mass Highway. We know there's some other issues underneath that they had to deal with, but they go back to being Mass Highway issues, we have to identify them here.
But they don't become part of our project?
Yes.
Yes, they don't.
They do, they will become, we'll, we'll wind up fixing that line that's in the street.
Even though it's Mass Highway's line?
It's Mass Highway's line, but we're not paying, Mass Highway's going to run this job, not the Town of Milton.
Understand.
So they will make sure that it's fixed, if they're fixing, if they're doing the job, they're going to make sure that their pipe gets fixed.
But it's coming out of our million dollars.
Yep.
Nice. I was going to say.
It's upsetting our street too.
Yeah, I know. When will we know, and will we know at the twenty-five percent point, what kind of, you know, exactly what the traffic signal improvements are? Street improvements, what those are, for example, the Wood Street overpass, is there, right now, for whatever reason, don't ask me why, the traffic is flowing wonderfully on Granite Ave in the afternoon by the fire station. It flies through there, I, I go through it almost every day at five o'clock, six o'clock. The traffic is flying through there. But then you hit a wall when you get to that Wood Street overpass. Uh, which never used to be there. The traffic was all backed up at Granite Ave, so you could always get over Wood Street. Now it's just the opposite.
We actually.
And, and you, you come over Wood Street and you've got no line of sight. You, you can't see traffic coming up from Adam Street. Because of the vegetation and everything else that's there.
Right. Those, those plants over on.
The design is just terrible.
I know that, I know that Howard Sign Hudson is not looking at the Wood Street island. But I do know that they're looking on Granite Ave's side. I do know that they have looked at the, um, Basset Street intersection.
Yep.
I know that they are looking at the, uh, the bump out at the gas station there.
Yep.
Um, in order to take that right-hand turn, you're, you have to go into the left-hand lane.
Right.
So I know they're looking at that. I know they're looking at the, um, there's a pedestrian light at Brugus. They're looking at it and how the lines fit in that area. Um, I know that they've had discussions with Mass Highway over the parking spaces right there. Part of that is because that, that road is in really bad shape between the fire station and Basset Street.
Oh, yeah, it is.
It's, it's two lanes, but those two lanes, people are kind of weaving because they're trying to miss the potholes. But at the same time, you've got cars coming in from the gas station. You've got cars coming out of the marketplace and you've got cars coming out of Franklin's, uh, Basset Street. They are looking at that whole intersection and see what they can do to improve it.
Right. Like I said, now you, because of, because everything's flowing so well on Granite Ave, it, it almost backs up at times, you know, four thirty, five o'clock at night. The cars going over the Wood Street overpass are backed up, almost back to the lights.
I know that in these plans is work on, is at least preliminary work on those intersections. So is it going to answer the Wood Street piece? No, but it's addressing what's leading to part of that problem. We just have to stay on top of it to make sure that it does handle the problem.
Yeah. I've often thought that, you know, that if that was squared, if, if somehow that thing was squared off, so you'd have a better sightline down to Adam Street, it would be better. Right now, you're, you're looking as far over your shoulder as you can. You got, you got five o'clock at night, you've got just traffic constantly coming out of, coming down to Adam Street now it seems. I don't know why, but, I mean, you know, you'll get three or four minutes of just constant line of cars and you get a traffic light and you get a break, but, but until that happens, everything's just backing up. So it's.
I'll keep asking.
Okay.
The East Milton Movie Theater. They had a neighborhood meeting last Friday night. It was just meant to be a, uh, you know, to get the word out. This is the, they're going to the Z B A for, uh, their, their parking issue. They're going to the planning board for, uh, site plan approval. This was just to introduce some of their issues to the neighbors. Uh, they did go to the Z B A last night and although I was in the building, I was upstairs at two conservation hearings and missed most of the meeting, but I did get the gist of what happened and I know that, um, the issue over there is traffic. The traffic isn't one of the Z B A's, uh, issues to deal with. This was parking and change of use. It had nothing to do with the traffic. They're going, they continued that hearing until, uh, January thirteenth. And I did talk to the Falcones today and they're going to start their site plan approval so that they can maybe get some information to the Z B A about some of the issues in there. They'll be doing that, uh, December tenth. So.
December tenth is what, the planning board?
Planning board. They'll start the site plan approval for the restaurant. That, then, uh.
And in the meantime, Bill, what's the status on the renovations they're doing on the facade for the storefronts? When will that be complete?
There was a, there was. That should be done in, in just a couple of weeks. What they're doing is they're changing out the front windows and the front doors. They're changing out the paths that go into the, uh, existing stores. They're doing this on times that the, uh, the stores are, they're not trying to close them, you know, they don't want to close them down at all, so they're trying to do it as quickly as they can as, um, they don't want to, they don't want to lose business to those establishments, so they're trying to work with the owners. Um, they are replacing the sill that goes across the entire front of the building. They are, are replacing the sidewalk that's in front of the building. Presently, the sidewalk tips to the building. So water, snow melts and goes into the basement of the building. The sill was gone. They had to put in a new one. They redid the front of the building. When they redid the front of the building, they also, you know, took a look at the roof. When they took a look at the roof, the roof had to be replaced. Um, it, it was just a can of worms. Every time they touched one thing, they had to go further. They went in to do some of the brick work and they found out that, um, they had to re-point more than just the brick. They had to take big sections off and reapply. The windows that are going in, um, are going to be dark bronze. They will be thermal paint. Where there are currently, uh, air conditioners that come through the, the front facade, all those will be removed and all the uh, air conditioning units will be put to the roof. Uh, there'll be new heating units put into the units, all of it on the roof. They just finished, I believe they just finished that roof yesterday. Um, now they just have to finish the cap up there. They did a, um, they stripped the paint on the, on the brick. Not last Sunday, but the Sunday before. They did that in coordination with the town. Um, they wanted to start at eight. Uh, we came back and said, no, nine. We didn't want to upset the neighbors, so we did push the times back. Everything that's been being done down there has been coordinated through, um, the, the building department, the D P W and the police department. So they've known what's going on. The sidewalk, they've made sure that the sidewalk stays open, but they made sure that it stayed safe. They put the staging in there so that, you know, nobody gets disrupted by, um, as they're working on the roof, kind of drop something on them. They're working on the brick, they're not putting something on them. They'll move that plywood front down as they do each individual store. Um, they're all getting new, new, new doors, new windows, and they get a new pad that's handicap accessible going into each one of the stores. They'll get, they'll get bathrooms that they've never had before. Or updated so that they are usable by everybody.
A new signage?
No. The signage is, uh, what the signage was. The signage for everybody but the restaurants, um, has already gone through sign review. They're keeping the same sign. The new restaurant will go through sign review, but they don't know the name of it yet, so they don't know what the sign will look like. The front facade is just trying to replicate what was there, um, back in history. It does not have the huge marquee that was there in the late fifties.
Yeah, and it was replaced with a flat one after.
Yes. The flat one, because that, that other one was big.
Yeah.
It actually went from, uh, the building that Estella's to Jim's Barbershop. It covered that whole front.
Yeah, I remember.
That was, I, I saw, I saw the, the beams inside on how it was constructed. It was big.
I do remember it. Question for you on the, um, the two houses that are out back. Are those going to be demolished or are they going to be saved and moved?
They're going to be demolished.
Right. Is there any possibility that it could be saved and moved? And the only reason I, I just thinking outside the box again, it could be affordable units someplace if we could figure a place to put them.
You know, they were moved once already. I think they were moved from where the expressway is now.
They were moved from the expressway. It, it's something that, um, I, I was actually talking to Mr. Fel, not, not Bob, but one of the Falcones today about this issue, but, um, I, I'll bring it up. We'll have that discussion.
Yeah. I mean, I don't have any thoughts in mind, but, uh, but it, it could be two affordable units someplace if we could find a home for them.
That is thinking outside the box, isn't it?
I will talk to Mr. Falcone in the morning.
Okay.
Last issue, Randolph Ave forty B?
Yes.
Just kind of the synopsis of what this is. When the original, uh, proposal for the forty B on Randolph Ave came in, it was seventy-two units, uh, with thirty-six three bedrooms. We did the sidewalk in January.
Yeah, I think we all collectively said that's too many three-bedroom units.
And said, work on that number. It's too many. So I did. I did talk to them. I did get them to understand that thirty-six was way too many. Their new issue is, they went from three buildings to two. They went from seventy-two units to ninety units. But they went to a hundred and forty-six bedrooms. A hundred and forty-six bedrooms is ten less than they had before. They also now only have nine three bedrooms. So that, uh, their affordables would be ten ones, ten twos and three threes. So, I mean, although we got more units, we got less bedrooms and we got an appreciable number less three bedrooms. The.
Bill, what's that new number again? From seventy-two to one?
Ninety.
Ninety.
Ninety?
Just to be clear too, it was nothing that we negotiated with them in terms of the number of units. We just asked that they make fewer.
Get rid of those three bedrooms.
I, I think there were, I would describe it as there were general comments that three bedrooms is always a concern, the number of three bedrooms.
Yes.
I don't think, I would say that we got three bedrooms, you know, that we got something or that we asked specifically for anything.
No, we just said.
But there were general comments about.
We were going to.
The high number of three-bedroom units on the sidewalk.
We were going to come back at, that was just, you know, ten percent is one thing. Going above ten percent and going fifty percent, we just felt was a little bit much.
Yeah. So let's just clarify. This is a proposal, it's a revised proposal, but it's pending before the zoning board of appeals.
Board of Appeals meets on this December second. That'll be the first hearing.
There's a deadline for comments of this Friday, the twenty-first.
Yes. I mean, I don't think that this precludes us from going back and talking about our same issues that we had originally, which become, uh, site plan issues, which is, uh, emergency access, secondary access, um, the off-site traffic. The off-site traffic issue is still there and now with more cars, it's probably even more. There's also the pedestrian component that I know is in our letter.
Right.
To the Z B A for just reminding them that these are things that we talked about before. They're things we want to bring up again.
Can I ask, you know, is this the only, is the Z B A going to be the only opportunity for the, for the neighbors to, uh, voice their opposition or, uh, if they're in favor? Of, I mean, this is going from seventy-two to ninety units, which I understand is less bedrooms, but there's a lot more families in there now.
It's also two buildings rather than three, so I'm guessing that we're talking higher buildings, additional stories than what was initially.
Is that what it is? Higher stories?
They're a little bit higher.
Yeah. Has, is this the first time that you've made this public?
They, H and W Apartments went to the Conservation Commission last night. They brought up what their project was. The, um, project was, the presentation to the Conservation Commission was televised and some of the neighbor comments were things that have absolutely nothing to do with Conservation Commission. Conservation Commission understands that. They understand this is the first foray to it. They did listen, but they did make the point that, you know, these are issues for the Z B A. They're not for conservation. But they took them under advisement, that they, they understand the issues. These are ninety rentals in two buildings, sixty and thirty units in each building. Is eighty-three underground parking spots, the seventy-three surface parking spots for total a hundred and fifty-six spaces. Uh, it's a seven point eight-one acre site and, um, there are, I guess the, the other thing you might be interested in is the, uh, the affordable rents in those units. A one-bedroom is seven hundred and fifty-six feet. A two-bedroom is one thousand eighty-four square feet and a three-bedroom would be, uh, one thousand three hundred and eighty-seven square feet. They're, they're not the biggest, but they're not too small. A one-bedroom is, uh, their expected rent is one thousand two hundred and seventy. A two-bedroom is fifteen twenty-five.
Is this market or affordable?
Affordable, okay. Give you the market in a second.
Yeah.
The three-bedroom is seventeen sixty-one. The markets are, there's thirty-three, um, there's thirty-three one-bedrooms and they are fifteen hundred dollars. There's twenty-eight, uh, two-bedrooms and they're twenty-two hundred dollars. There's, there's six three-bedrooms and they're twenty-four hundred dollars. I think that, um, the buildings all have, uh, they, they have three stories with a gable roof, parking underneath. We still have some issues with, uh, people who are, they're identifying the, the sloped area. They're building the buildings into the slope so that it, they take advantage of the size of the building and they're trying to lessen the height, looking from Highland Street down.
So Bill, I, let me just suggest, I don't think we need to get too caught up in the weeds of this because that's really the zoning board's jurisdiction. What, what I think is important to note here is that the department heads have had a preliminary meeting with Kathleen O'Donnell, who is our new forty-B attorney. We expect that we'll be filing a comment letter, um, by the deadline on Friday, probably, which, we had the last one, they always treat one before, so what we did was filed our, the, a copy of the comment letter that we sent to Mass Housing, went to the Z B A with a cover letter asking for us to have a chance to come in and our department heads to come in and speak, which they're currently doing. So I, I assume we'll take a similar approach. Um, we have Kathleen on board now. We didn't have her on board that early in that process, so maybe there'd be some slight differences.
That draft letter went to you tonight. Well, probably while you were coming to this meeting.
Okay. So, so, but we're, in other words, we're expecting that we're going to be submitting comments and they're going to be probably very similar to what's in our submission from sometime last spring, I think it was, that we submitted these. Now, the project has changed in the meantime.
Yes.
The number of units, the number of buildings, so there, the, is it Mass Housing or which, which agency?
Yeah, Mass Housing.
Mass Housing. So the developer submitted the revised plans to Mass Housing, which weighed in and said, it's not inconsistent with our initial approval and continue on with the process, in a nutshell. And this is really our opportunity. Now, we didn't have a chance at that time. We were not given an opportunity to submit any further comments to, to the funding agency, Mass Housing, when the plan was revised. So our comments will all be directed to the, and when I say ours, it's the department heads who report up to us. All we're doing is making sure that they have the resources available to them to bring public safety issues, wetlands issues, whatever is specific to a, a particular project, to put those before the zoning board. To make, because it is the only, as you said, Dennis, it's the, it's the one place where the neighbors and the town can go because it's a comprehensive permit. It's a one-stop shop. And that's the location where we have to really raise all of these issues, other than the fact that the Conservation Commission has some ancillary jurisdiction in some different areas. But, um, so we're on track towards getting comments in, vetting some issues and the Conservation Commission has already started the process.
They did and is, that, that will be continued till, um, December ninth.
The Conservation Commission?
Yes. I think there's two sentences out of the new letter which came out November third and they are, "Mass Housing has reviewed the preliminary information regarding the proposed changes to the project, including an updated performance market analysis and letter of interest from an N E F lender. Since compliance with these eligibility requirements will not be affected by the proposed changes, Mass Housing is able to reaffirm the project eligibility letter." So they accept that it is being, you know, the minimalist changes.
So we have a revised proposal for neighbors, abutters, anyone who lives in the area who's interested. They should be looking at the revised plans, not the initial plans and making comments based on the current proposal.
We made sure that the, um, this entire document is on the town's website. You go to the homepage over on the right-hand side, it'll say forty-B projects. Click on forty-B projects. It'll say, um, seven-eleven. Click on forty-B projects, it'll say Seven-Eleven Randolph Ave. And it's there, there's two pieces to it. All of the plans are there, too, the architects' plans and the engineers' plans. It is kind of a big file, so let it build.
Is our comment letter also on the website? To Mass Housing, our comment letter to Mass Housing? Okay. Okay, good. Is there anything else that you wanted to speak about?
The plate went to, the plate two.
Yes.
The plate two went to zoning board of appeals last week, the decision, they got a decision, it's been signed by two out of the three members, it'll be stamped in with the clerk either Friday or Monday, probably Monday. The planning board will hold their site plan approval for the same project December tenth, it's a Wednesday. And all they're doing is adding a dormer to the back of the building. There's two windows there now, between the two windows, they're, add a dormer, push it up. There'll be windows added, so it adds more light into that area. Changes the headroom in that area.
But it's, it's in the existing, where the old restaurant?
It's taking out the old, where the old restaurant was and redoing it to what the plate does.
Okay. Now, will, they, they'll clearly be a little different than what they are in Central Ave.
It is, it's bigger, it'll have more, they're opening a little bit earlier, they are looking for that morning commuter.
What about afternoon and evening? Do they have any plans at this point?
Seeing that they're not coming till the tenth, I can't answer that question.
Okay.
Bill, I think for the public, because you haven't mentioned where it is.
Milton Marketplace is on the second floor.
Yes, so the plate is opening up a second restaurant?
Yes.
Yeah.
Milton Marketplace will be on the second floor, same owners, same people, will just be running back and forth, more people.
So, maybe we should take this approach with the town planners' quarterly report going forward, split it up and come back a little more frequently, because your projects, there's a lot of general interest, there's more interest in some of these projects than there are in what the consolidated facilities or another department that's more internal within the town might have to report, so so, well, that way we can spend a little more time on, on a fewer number of projects and cover them over a period of time. Thank you, Bill.
Okay, thanks, Bill.
The next item is boards and committee appointments.
I'll move to appoint the following members to the town government study committee to serve through November two thousand and fifteen, John A. Cronin, Leroy Walker, Richard Neely, and Philip Matthews.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Town administrators' report.
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to inform the board of selectmen in the town that the League of American Bicycleists have awarded the town with the distinct honor of being a bicycle-friendly community at a designation of the bronze level. Some of the infrastructure work that has happened in the town over the last recent years to enable us to get that distinction, I'll just name a few of them, is the new bicycle lane on Blue Hills Parkway, the new wider bike lane with shoulder on Uncity Road, wider bike lane with shoulder on Granite Ave, then the Pontic Greenway along Truman Parkway, the new bike lanes on Central Ave, and other small ancillary improvements. I also want to express my sincere thanks to the Bicycle Advisory Committee for all that they do on behalf of the town to make us a bicycle-friendly community.
It worked very hard.
And I will have Lee Tomer from that committee into a future meeting to talk about some other exciting ideas at the Bicycle Advisory Committee we'd like to put forward. And that's it, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. The chair's report, I do not have anything to report tonight. Citizen speak response, do we have anything from citizen speak?
We only had one, which was the, the signs. I guess, you know, the fear of saying something I haven't fully thought out, I guess, which is always dangerous. We, we do have a new sign by law, I, I think it's a positive step forward, because there's some better guidelines by which to prove these signs. But, but I think the citizens also have to realize that technology is changing, and that, you know, the demands of, especially in the business district, of what signs have to be to promote their businesses are changing, and, you know, we can't stay forever in, you know, the nineteenth century, so, you know, at some point in time, we have to at least get into the next century, and I hope everybody kind of understands that, I mean, LED is here to stay. We can make sure that it's not, you know, a burden to the residential neighborhood, but, but you can't be different than everybody else either. I mean, the, the gas station signs, if you look around, they're, within a year, they're all going to be LED. You know, the, you know, look, look through Canton, look through all the other towns, and, and that's what you're seeing now, because it's, it's less costly to change the gas prices when they're, because they can look inside the building. You know, I mean, there's, there's many reasons to do it, so, I guess just be patient, have some faith in us, that we'll vet everything out as best we can.
Okay, I wanted to mention something that came up at a citizen speak last week. It was last week when we last met, we were over in the Cronin Room, and we had a number of speakers who came in and talked about the Yulin Rink. And one, one citizen came in and had some requests for information that we're in the process of, of getting, and we'll, and that's all fair game, I think, for citizen speak, and we'll get answers to those questions. There was one comment that was made by a representative of the Friends of the Yulin Rink that I think should not go unanswered, and I, I want to respond to that. And I, and I watched the tape, because I wanted to make sure I got the quote accurate. It said, the quote was, "That neither the town planner nor town council has acted in the best interests of the people of Milton," again, with respect to the Yulin Rink. And it's always fear to have disagreements, and we may not like a particular outcome, but I think, to say that neither the town planning director or the town council, John Flynn, had acted in the best interests of the people of Milton, is just not, does not hold up, particularly when the discussion was held on the issues about the Yulin Rink. We did go through them on an item on the agenda, we went through specifically three questions that the Friends of the Yulin Rink had raised. So, I think the substance of that discussion showed that both the planning director and the town council spent a considerable amount of time dealing with the Yulin Rink over the course of the last five years, but it was not only them, it was multiple prior boards of selectmen. We've had town management changes during that time, we had a former town administrator and a former board, none of us were currently, who currently sit on the board, were on the board at the time that the initial contract was entered into regarding the Yulin Rink. I, I think the discussion that we had showed that many people were motivated by good desires, including the members of the prior board, who decided to take that on and go out and respond to the, to the request for, for proposals that the state put out for the rink. And there can be disagreements about hours of public skating, and I think we need to address that going forward, and that's what we, I, I think, showed that we were doing at our discussion last week. But the claim that the town planner or the town council is not acting in the best interests of the people of Milton is just inconsistent with what I know of both of those people. Both of them are honorable people, upstanding individuals. They reported to multiple boards of selectmen and town management, they carried out the wishes of the boards, and I do think that they acted in the best interests of the people of Milton. And I just, I, I think they're both honorable people, and I think, whether we agree or disagree, and I probably have disagreed with both of them on different matters over time, on different specific issues, but their character is what it is, and it speaks for itself, and it's, and it's, I think deserves high, I think both, both individuals deserve high respect, and should not, there just should not be a claim that they were not acting in the best interests of the town, and that should go unanswered. I think it's important that, that I, as the board chair, and, and maybe both of you want to weigh in on it, but individually, as the chair of the board, you know, John Flynn, there's a lot of lawyers who go to law school wanting to be Atticus Finch, and not many of them fall into that category over the course of time. I think John Flynn is one of those people who does, who's, who's just the epitome of your upstanding, morally good, honorable attorney, who works hard, does the best he can every day for the town of Milton, and I'm sure all of his other clients, and has always acted in the best interests of the town. And for the planning director, I would say the same thing, he's overworked. This is not a planning function running the Yulin Rink, and it's something that is really a park and recreation function. But it was put on the planning director by former management of the town and by former boards, and we've continued that, and, and, you know, unfortunately, we don't have the staffing and all the resources that we like, I'd love to take that off the planning director's plate and move it to somebody else, because it's a big time commitment, it involves a lot of hours, a lot of meetings, and it takes the town planner away from other functions.
I'm sure the planning director would love that.
I'm sure he would, I'm sure he would. But I want to thank them for their service, and I, I think that they have both, over their years with the town of Milton, acted in the best interests of the town, again. Reasonable people can disagree on specific issues, but I do want to defend them, and I, and I also wanted to recognize, I don't think we did an adequate enough job of recognizing that Tom Hurley, Representative Walter Timblety, Bill Clark, Emery Fagan, probably others that I'm not even thinking of, have put in an exorbitant amount of time on the Yulin Rink. And it's not the highest attention-getting issue in town, it's not a big development project, it's not something that involves, you know, big vast sums of money in our budget, but it's something that has required an awful lot of time by a committed group of individuals. And I know you've had meetings with the Friends of the Yulin Rink representatives, and really have tried to, as you said last week, be cooperative, be productive, and, you know, ideally, we're all Friends of the Yulin Rink, we all want the best outcome for this rink, and we all want the best outcome for the town, recognizing that it's a state asset, and it's not only for the citizens and the children of Milton, it's for children and citizens, adults included, of other communities and other user groups. And hopefully, we can do, as you said at the last meeting, Tom, move forward, try to be cooperative and proactive, and address the matter going forward, rather than just going, trying to rehash whatever happened in the past. You know, let's, I think we've answered a lot of the questions about what happened in the past, but let's focus on moving forward, getting as much public skating as we can, as much ice time for local residents as we can, recognizing what our limitations are.
Yeah, I'll echo those comments, and I, I, I think the, the, this last week about, about John Flynn and, and Bill Clark were definitely uncalled for, and, and untrue. That, you know, we, we were faced with a very difficult situation, and it wasn't us, it was, it was the previous board, but that rink had opened in a very short period of time, and, and the, the town took it on for fears that if, if it didn't, that the rink would be privatized, and, and it would have a detrimental effect to all of those rink users, and that's why the town stepped in. The town didn't have the money, and still doesn't have the money, to absorb any kind of deficits that that rink might have. So, so, I, I think they did the best they possibly could. In, in terms of public skating, I happened to go through it last week, because I had, answered a couple of questions to the Times in terms of a story that was being written, and I actually went through and scheduled out the public skating hours that were in two thousand and nine, ten, under DCR, and then the two thousand and thirteen, fourteen hours, clearly many more hours. But when you look at the, other than, back in, when DCR was running it, for the most part, they, they were doing eight hours of public skate a week. And on school vacations is kind of when they made up for it, you know, sometimes they'd have an entire eight hours. I don't know who the hell is going to skate for eight hours, but, but, but they, you know...
Out of one block at a time.
Yeah, but, but they were, you know, on those school vacation weeks, they were open a lot. But, but, you know, so were we, you know, we're doing, I don't think we had any eight-hour blocks, but, but with the exception of, and, 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 again, if you look back at DCR's bracket, a lot of those hours were during times when school was in session, similar to what we have. They had the same problems that we had, that, you know, that if, if you want to try and make any money, try and make ends meet, you can't have free public skating taken away from, you know, tho- those times when you can, when you can rent the rink out. So, you know, looking at it, currently more hours, with the exception of those Fridays, and, and for the most part, in two thousand and fourteen, there was at least an hour added back on a lot of those Fridays, you know, during those prime times. So, you know, I, I think that we've done the best job we could with the bad situation.
Well, your comments go more to the substance of the claims. My, what really bothered me was the, the comments that two town officials, and that's what they are, both are, it really was a comment about them, and it was even on a call for an investigation of town council, which I, I don't think is warranted, and I, I did want to just address what I think were comments about two officials not acting in the best interests of the town that I just reject completely. That's all I have for citizen speak response. Anyone else for citizen speak? Future agenda items? We do want to cover the long-range financial plan, which we're looking at, I think, for December first now, or December eighth.
We were scheduled to have the long-range financial plan on the December first meeting, but I will tell you that is...
A lot of budgets.
Yeah, you have a lot of budgets on that December first meeting, and I just, I don't want us to hurry through the financial, our five-year financial forecast presentation, because we know we have a long agenda, so I didn't know if maybe you wanted to pick another night to do the financial forecast presentation, and just have that solely the item on the agenda, and to invite your committee, your school committee, some of your other boards and committees, and, and have a full discussion with all the boards and committees present on the financial forecast.
It probably does warrant its own night.
I just have no idea how long it will actually take, I guess, but, but, yeah, I mean, I can understand that.
Schedule a special meeting for the, for the budget with other committees?
I think, I think, yeah, the other, I, it should, at a minimum, be a joint meeting with the warrant committee, a joint meeting with the school committee.
Mm-hmm, I agree. I guess that would be one way to do it, or you could roll it out individually to each board.
Right. But, you know, we're also crunched for time.
We're getting late into the fall, so, okay, do, do, what should we do? Try to schedule, check availability with other boards?
Why don't we check availability of the, of the committee members and the warrant committee and the school committee, and I will send some dates to you, if I'm secure with.
I think earlier December would be better than later, just given the holiday schedule.
Absolutely.
People start becoming unavailable the later we get into the month.
Right.
Okay.
Emery, could you, at the next meeting, give us an update on where we are in acquiring the cemetery land? The extra two acres, two and a half acres, whatever it is? I know we're pretty close to closing on that, on, on that property.
Yes, sure.
Yeah, we're just waiting for some title insurance or something like that, but this is something I'd like to get cleaned up by the end of the year, if possible, and get closed on so we can take possession of it.
There, there's two other things, I think, and I'm not sure when they should fall on the agenda, but I, I think we want to get the animal shelter moving forward, I know, I know the, you know, we're still working on the memorandum of understanding, but, and I guess that just came through from town council, what I understand, or it was coming through. And the other one is swift hat, in terms of...
Well, swift hat, we're going to...
There are a few things I think we can do as a board, or we can at least clear up, you know, I, I tend to agree that at some point, we want to hand it over to a committee to look at, at best use.
So, it's right now the swift hat, the planning director and town council are finishing up the research on that. I know the planning director has submitted some information to town council, and we're waiting for it to, we need to follow, we need to follow up with the town council on that to pin down some issues before, probably, we should probably get that universe pinned down before we back in and schedule a discussion at a meeting about any aspect of it, just so we have all the facts, and we know what the, where the researchers led us, and if there's anything else that needs to be done.
Mm-hmm.
But that, that is something I know we're following up on, and...
Yep.
In the animal shelter, I am scheduled to meet with Mary McGedrick next week to go over the draft, so make sure that you do read your drafts and submit any of your suggested comments. So, we do hope to have that on the, on upcoming agenda.
I, I thought Tom was actually commenting on the cemetery, I just wanted to finish up the comments, and make sure you look up on the, on the cemetery.
Yes, I'll speak with John Flynn on that, get it, yep.
Do, are all the budgets, the remaining budgets, will they all be on December first? Or are there any that won't make that night?
Your selectmen budget may not make that night only because of some negotiations and reorganization. that I have to complete. But all your other budgets, the budgets under the board of selectmen jurisdiction, you'll have information technology, you'll have fire, police, MEMA, central business, law, selectmen's E and R, so you will have your, your budgets, most of them on December first, so it will be a long meeting.
They'll be up for approval?
Yes.
Or to send on for approval?
Yes.
Okay, so, anything else on future agenda items? We've got a list. Okay, then I will move that we enter executive session to discuss the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property Zero Central Avenue and to release two thousand and thirteen executive session minutes. Believing that having these discussions in open session would have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the body, enter return to open session to adjourn.
Second.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you, we're now in executive session.